I love hearing that because that was always my theory. Our son lived in home for a long time and it was like, it was important that he did because he was wouldn't have done well on his own. But when he finally left, we helped him shop, we helped him haul stuff, and I gave him money for the down payment, you know? Just gets on.
Well, it was nice to have her with us. We were children because she was very helpful, you know?
She starts September, the September meeting.
Okay, 2:30. Okay, 2:30 with all meeting order. Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is much easier to do in person than over the phone. Exactly. Okay, we are going to open up the floor to communications from parents, staff, and district residents. I'm going to read our quick disclaimer here. The board appreciates hearing from parents, staff, and district residents. At our regular board meetings, the Board of Directors provides an opportunity for communications from parents, staff, and district residents. This time is reserved during our working meeting for the board to list the comments, input, and information. The board does not respond to comments provided as our goal is to listen and to learn. As appropriate, the board will ask the superintendent and her staff to look into any issues raised. Please note, it is important for all community members to feel welcome and safe during the board's business meeting. During the public comment period, please refrain from any positive or negative expressions such as clapping or booing in response to a person who is providing public comments. If any audience member has concerns about how they are being treated by any other attendee, please contact a cabinet member to report the issue. The board does not take public comments on issues related to personnel or individually named staff members at board meetings. However, you can email the board with any such comments. Okay, we have, our first speaker is Tyler Thompson. Tyler, Tyler, oh, sorry, thank you.
Comments, I said, community concern is more policy concern, and I apologize for misinterpreting that. I also want to say quickly, there's a policy in here, and if you let, if I have permission to go through my whole thing, I promise it's going to come up, but it's not going to be very evident at first. So, hi, I'm Tyler. I come today as a lifelong member of the community. I, like many others, unfortunately, some can't be here, and consider the actions of one of our school board representatives. Again, the policy will come, I promise. Recently, a school board member chose to post a picture of themselves in an individual currently under a federal investigation for pedophilia and child sex trafficking on a public social media account. Additionally, the comment attached to the photo kind of shows this man as a model leader. What concerns me most is that when the community rightfully brought their concerns to this individual about this post, this individual chose to attack and belittle members of the community along with political lines. Now, I know we all make mistakes, but this individual chose to disregard and double down instead of taking constructive criticisms and valuing concerns that maybe had, again, insulting those concerns forward. Now, you all lead children, and I understand that it's a huge responsibility, but we as a community want to see our children protected. I question the actions made by these individual, by this individual, and I would like to ask the board to either make a statement or present policy on what is and is not appropriate for board members when they associate with people under investigation for crimes against children. I also ask that if the board so chooses that this person be investigated for their, what's the word, is keep, for if this person is capable of being a school board member due to his or her absolute hostility towards members of the community who brought such actions to light. Thank you and have a great weekend.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rachel Ossler.
Hello, thank you for your time. Like many communities and school boards, we don't agree on everything. We all want what's best for our students. Where we differ is how we think we should go about achieving that. Critical race theory is not a synonym for culturally relevant teaching. Culturally relevant teaching is deeply embedded in students' home lives, communities, and cultural funds of knowledge, their life experiences, which for some of our students involves systemic racism. Using books that depict that beautiful diversity we have in our community, books that act as mirrors, windows, and sliding glass doors for all of our students is not CRT. It's best teaching practices. Educating students on historical events like the Tulsa Race Massacre, the Rosero Program, the Voting Rights Act of 1965, the Indian Removal Act is not CRT. It's best teaching practices. Maya Angelou, an esteemed Black poet who has, whose work has been banned and contributions to society were unjustly hidden from students by school boards under the false pretense of banning CRT. Once said, "When you know better, you do better." Now that you've been given factual information about CRT in our district, I hope that this board does just that. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it for our in-person. Do we have anyone online who'd like to give comment this evening?
I'm saying no.
Okay. We are going to move on. Thank you very much. Okay, next on our agenda is consent items.
I move to approve the consent items as written.
Okay, I am first. Do I have a second?
I second.
Race, perfect. Patty, I'll call for the real call vote, please.
Okay, Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Ms. Sunvit?
Yes.
Mr. Mabry?
Yes.
And Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Thank you.
Perfect. Next, we have superintendent and board member reports. Dr. Pierce.
Okay, well, it's nice to see everyone. We have the meeting in July where board members attended remotely, so it feels like it's been a while that we've all been back together. Here on the district side, we're really excited for the start of the 22-23 school year, and we have been busily preparing over these past couple months and throughout August. We held our administrator meetings as we do every year, and we do have a number of new administrators this year and administrators in new positions. And at the September meeting, we'll be introducing formally the new people to you so you can see the names and faces and start to put that all together. We also have a new student board representative, and the new student board rep always joins us at the first meeting in September each year, so that's when London will be officially here, and we're glad to have her. She's reached out a couple times, so she and I have been in communication, and she's been in communication with Zach, so he's been helping prepare her, and we're really excited to have her join us. This Friday, next Monday, and next Tuesday are our staff professional development days, and so our teachers will all be back in buildings for training and preparation, and we also have the annual All Staff Welcome Back Assembly Tuesday morning, first thing Tuesday morning, and board members are all invited to attend if you'd like to attend. So it's been a busy summer as we've been gearing up for school to start. We've been hiring staff and making preparations. I wanted to note one thing that was new this year was kindergarten kickoff, and I don't know if you've seen, it was in the paper, it's on our website, on our social media, but it provided the opportunity for many of our incoming kindergarteners to come into school already to meet their fellow students, meet their teachers, families, to meet teachers, and it's really given them the opportunity to ease that transition. and it's really given them the opportunity to ease that transition as they start school for the first time. They will be, by the way, the class of 2035 in case you're keeping track. I also just want to give a big shout out to my team here, everybody who works here in this building, to transportation, nutrition services, facilities, and maintenance and to all of our schools for all they're doing and have been doing to get ready for our big first day coming up. First day is Wednesday, next Wednesday, August 31st. We do have some of our high schools doing a freshman only day. We've got a slow start for kindergarten which allows some parent teacher conferences before all the students come back. So all of the details about the first day are on our district website. Families are probably also getting those communications directly from schools, but we have a school guide, back to school guide on our district website. It has all the details and lots of useful information for families and we're just really excited for the school year to start. Wanted to share one other kind of big thing and it's a big check. Always fun to share a big check. We, our schools participate in our district in the GISA affinity card partnership and this year, just a couple weeks ago, at the annual celebration, we were awarded this big check and a real check to go with it for $59,233. And this money all goes to our ASBs in our schools, so this goes right to our students, helps to support DECA and pay for other student-related things, ASB things. So we're really grateful for GISA.
Is that the first time we get that like every year?
We get it every year.
Really?
Yeah.
That's great.
All right.
It feel like it comes right out of my checkbook.
Yeah, and we're really grateful for all the people, right, who have the branded cards and for GISA for having this program. So I wanted to share a big fun check.
Very cool. Gabe, you have anything to report, say?
Yeah, so I, a couple weeks back, I attended the active shooter training with KPD at Kamikin. I did both sessions, so a little over three hours watching scenarios and stuff play out and the takeaway for me from that is our KPD staff and those around in the area are definitely prepared and committed to ensuring the safety of our students and so it was good to see that and talk to the chief and just kind of pick his brain a little bit on school safety. And then just want to, I just want to highlight one particular teacher and I'm sure she does this for all her students, but I got a letter from Ms. Heights at Ridgeview who my son was in last year. It was this great letter, told her how excited she was for him to be in sixth grade and I know she does that for all her students, but I just see that, I mean, the impact there for those kids is going to be a lot and I know a lot of teachers do that. I just, this was personal to me, so I just wanted to call that out, so.
Yeah, so I was able to meet with, is this thing on? Can you get this here? So I was able to meet with the new athletic director of South Ridge, Rick Wells and really, I really left impressed. I was only with him for probably 45 minutes, but I left very impressed about his vision and his, and all the different things he's thought through and I just really wanted to say that, so that was a great hire. I think, I think he's going to do fantastic there and he's got a really, really just a lot of really cool, neat, fresh ideas and I really thought that was a great meeting. I met with a few teachers, a couple different meetings with teachers this week and again, I left impressed that they were just awesome, awesome teachers and I just, I mean, I just, I just really, I was really glad that those were the teachers that are teaching our kids and they really liked that. And then last thing is working on something with Bruce, the maintenance guy, and we're working on trying to, trying to create a soccer field for, I don't know if you, you haven't let me know this yet, does he tell you? We're trying to try to have a-
You're talking about Eric Bruce?
Eric Bruce, yeah, yeah. Working, having a soccer field, like a public partner, a public relationship with Three Rivers Soccer, add a soccer field for them and, and that's, that's the thing I think that's great about schools is if we can kind of continue to grow that community bond, I think it's really great. So anyway, those are a couple things that I did this last couple weeks and great experiences.
Can I ask a question about, is it a soccer field?
Yeah.
Associated with the schools?
So no, so we have an unused piece of grass and it's just actually right over there and, and then a local soccer club wanted to use, see if they could use that for a field, play some of their games there, so we're kind of going through that process of seeing if we can kind of create a scenario where we can have a field that, that they can play on.
And that'll go through the-
Yes, oh yeah, of course, yeah, yeah. Yep, it's going through that process right now.
Thank you. Dan?
So Dr. Pierce will laugh when Gabe talked about the active shooter thing. So I happen to have my scanner on because I was listening to an accident that a friend of mine was in and I heard that there were, there was a shooting, this was on Friday at Kamikin. Well, I knew Thursday they had done active shooter. I didn't know they were doing it Friday, so I called Patty really quick and she says, "Well, Dr. Pierce is in a meeting, but I'll send her a thing." So I did attend via scanner and I have to tell you, listening to it also was super, super impressive and all of the different agencies in the area and how, how well everybody coordinated it. So once I realized it wasn't for real, Dr. Pierce got in touch with me, she said, "No, it's just practice." They, they really do and I've seen them do it at South Ridge before and so just to know that how well we work with KPD and KFD and everybody else, it doesn't make you feel perfect, but it makes you feel a little bit more confident in, in safety issues. Also, attended the Benton Franklin Mobility Task Force meeting a week or so ago. For those who had youth who were on the free fair for the summer, which was kids through 18, was supposed to be up at the end of August, that pre-youth fair is now permanent. So if you have a youth that rides Benton Franklin Transit, you just need to get a card which you can get through Benton Franklin Transit, any of the transit centers or online. So that's something they've been working very hard for. I attended, not the one last night, but a couple weeks ago, the Richland School Board meeting online. Also, the racial equity and social justice Tri-City Coalition monthly meeting, our League of Urban Latin American Citizens monthly meeting, and then WASDA networking hour, which the important thing that came out of that was updated Department of Health COVID guidelines, which Dr. Pierce and all the principals are up to date on that and if you have questions, you can talk with Dr. Pierce or Brian Love about those things. So August was kind of a calm month. I'm sure it'll come along.
Perfect, thank you. Mr. Mabry?
I have a couple of things. I went to the National School Board Association meeting in San Antonio, Texas and it was stress, as we all know, to keep your finger on the pulse of the national schools policies and procedures that have been proposed. And one was funding, full funding of lunches and we were given a heads up that that could go away and sure enough, it's, it's gone away. Full funding of, of school lunches has gone away. And then I was also invited by our library staff from Washington Elementary to come visit and I think that invitation is open to everyone, so they really want to show what their library staff is capable of, so I thought I would pass it on.
Can I make a comment about lunches? Washington State is not a part of the money going away for lunches, so we are covered.
Yeah, that's part of the USDA program.
The part that's going away.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But let me follow up on that. It wasn't so much it gone away as that that happened behind the back of most citizens. Most citizens don't know that, that we didn't get it, but there are some people that are blindsided, sending their kids to, I'm talking about across the country now, thinking that they possibly would have free lunches and they don't, they were blindsided by such a condition.
I really don't have much. I actually also went to the active shooter program there for about an hour. It was impressive to watch the people work, watch them go through the scenarios there and I was, they were very good. Nice, nice to meet you there. Other than that, pretty quiet? Perfect. All right. Next on our agenda is reports and discussions. We're going to talk about strategic objectives. So board members, one thing I'm going to ask here in order to try and keep us moving here, let's keep our questions to the end, please. That way that we can let Dr. Pierce and the other presenters go through their program and then we can ask questions at the end. Thank you.
All right. So we, each year, as you know, we have a strategic plan and as a district and that strategic plan has a mission and a vision and strategic goals that remain the same every year and that mission, vision, and goals are right here on our screen. This is just that poster version of our plan. We've got the full plan that contains all of the performance indicators and targets that are tied to each goal and each year we specify annual objectives or essentially the work that we're going to do that year to continue to try to meet our targets and our overall goals and we track all that progress and report it to the Board. You'll see an update of that progress in September on our district performance indicators and targets annual report. So tonight I'm here to share with you our annual objectives, which have been updated for the 2022-23 school year. Want to touch on the process for how we update those objectives. We begin by looking at our data. We look at our student, staff, and family survey results. We look at our student academic achievement data and other organizational data and information that we have. We look at new requirements that are coming down from the state. We assess areas that need improvement or, you know, continued attention. We get additional input from administrators and staff and we get input and priorities from you, the Board. And that was discussed, if you remember, at the annual retreat in June and then my staff and I, we take all that information and we synthesize it and we develop our new strategic objectives for the year. So one touch really quickly and just to remind the Board about the Board priorities. So this was work that the Board did in June and I know it seems like a long time ago because it was, so I just wanted to refresh your memory real quick. At that retreat, the Board reviewed results of your annual 2022 self-assessment and one thing you did was identify areas of strength and opportunities for growth for board work aligned to the WASDA standards for board governance. Those five standards are shown here on the screen. And from that discussion, the Board identified these areas for focus. If you remember, I was up taking notes on white paper and took all that white paper back to my office and typed it all up and synthesized it and from that, what the Board identified was an interest in, in having increased community interaction and dissemination of information, increased ways to include stakeholders, including parents and students in processes. Board identified wanting to ensure that you as a Board have enough time after you receive some information to do research and so forth before making decisions. You want to continue to ensure that we've got as a district effective systems for instructional quality and staff evaluation and that we're maintaining our high standards for budget and resource management. So if you remember back to January 2022, when the Board, new Board first was forming with our new Board members at the time, the Board identified some priorities at that time. So this is from January of 2022 and the kind of big buckets or areas of focus at that time were student safety, that was, you know, back during COVID, so understanding, navigating COVID, funding, and then student learning and performance. So in June, you identified, you looked at that and then you identified like what, what now, what are priorities now at this time? And there was still a lot of focus obviously on student performance and, and success and especially post-secondary data and what our students are doing after graduation. A focus on increasing communication, a focus on safety, which a number of Board members mentioned tonight, a focus on providing supports for students, both social, emotional kinds of supports and kind of career life coaching, again, increased community involvement and ensuring that we have good processes in place for crisis management. So what I did is to take these notes from the Board meeting and put it together with your previous priorities that you had looked at in January for kind of an updated Board priority. So I don't know if you remember this whole discussion, but really those big areas of focus continue to be student safety and crisis management, community involvement, funding, and student learning and performance. So I say that because I think as you take a look at our strategic objectives for 2223, you're going to see a lot of these same areas obviously reflected in our strategic objectives. So there's a lot of information here. The Board received it in advance. I'm not going to obviously go through all of these, you know, line by line with you, but I want to highlight just a couple of things per goal. First, I want to highlight that we this year expanded a bit on the wording that we're using on our strategic plan, on our objectives, to make sure it's really descriptive enough for the public and for families to know what it is we're talking about. And we also organize them a little bit more so it's not just a big list, but it's kind of in areas of topic. For example, student safety and security, student social, emotional well-being. So this is all the work that we're doing in 2023 to continue to try to meet our targets and goal. Some of the work is continuing year to year. We obviously don't just start from scratch, throw everything out and just start over new, but it's a continuous improvement process and cycle, so we continue to identify things that are working, things that are effective and continue to do those things and to implement new things where we see areas of need. So for our first goal, students are safe, known, and valued. I just want to highlight the district safety, that was mentioned a number of times. We do have a formal district safety team meeting regularly to assess, that's the first bullet here, assess our facility safety needs. We've already made some improvements, for example, at South Ridge High School on, in that campus security in terms of entrance and secure entrance. And Board members have, after, especially after the KPD training, have mentioned, a couple Board members, some potential ideas for ways to increase safety at our elementary schools. So we're in the process of investigating some of that and that will likely be a discussion as we come back in September and talk about the levy. When it comes to our second goal of all students are engaged learners, you're going to hear tonight, the one I want to just highlight from here, this page is under curriculum and instruction. You're going to see a new policy being put forward tonight that includes the formation of an instructional materials committee to, in, expand parent involvement and, and staff involvement in reviewing learning materials and instructional resources prior to them being recommended to the Board. So more on that one in just a moment. For our third goal, all students are ready for their future. Wanted to highlight dual language because I don't know if you've seen it, but it's interesting, just today, the state superintendent, Chris Reichdahl, and there's an article in the paper talking about statewide efforts to expand dual language and that's something that we've been doing here in Kennewick for a number of years and are continuing to do. And I also wanted to highlight that we're going to be beginning the implementation of the comprehensive school counseling plan that the Board approved in spring. And one other quick one I wanted to highlight is we're fortunate this year when it comes to thinking about college and career readiness and helping students prepare for post-secondary. This year, we're going to have outreach specialists from Columbia Basin College. It's funded through, through Columbia Basin College, but they will be able to be regularly onsite at our high schools to help students with financial aid applications and some of that post-secondary preparation work. So those are our three student-focused goals. We've got seven goals, three are student-focused because our students are most important and we have goals focused on family, staff, community, and district because all of those people and processes help us meet our student goals. For the, our family-focused goal, on this page, I wanted to highlight again that instructional materials committee and some more opportunities for families to be involved in those processes. I also wanted to highlight a new system called Parent Square, which we're going to be implementing. It's a school communication tool and it's going to help us unify school communications and will potentially help us with some streamlining of volunteer processes, which I know is another thing the Board has expressed interest in. When it comes to staff, we've got lots of work going on connected to our staff-focused goal. The one that I wanted, I wanted to highlight a couple of things here. One is our, the Board had mentioned kind of evaluation systems and we have real good state mandated, but they're very good processes for teacher and principal professional growth and evaluation and we have some opportunity to look at some of our other areas. So we're going to look this year at our professional growth and evaluation system for our central office leaders. There's some good WASA frameworks and ways that we can strengthen those processes. We're also this year as a district really striving to intentionally infuse positivity into, into our schools and work- into our schools and workplaces. So that's something that you can be looking for as well. When it comes to our community-focused goal, this, by the way, just real quick, this, what you see on the screen, is a little bit different from what you've got in your board packet, but it's really just a formatting thing, so I didn't want to send you a whole new packet just for a formatting thing. But we've got lots of community partnerships that we highlight here and will continue to work to strengthen. And what you have in front of you are Community Ed catalog. So I wanted to highlight that, because one of the things we do in terms of community value and appreciation is to offer adult learning opportunities to our community members. You've got a catalog there. It's been expanded. It's a really great program, and that's something that we continue to build upon every year. And then finally, when it comes to our district-focused goal, lots of work going on, and the one I want to highlight, of course, is around fiscal responsibility. Funding is an area that the board continued to identify as a priority. We'll be working with you this year, pretty quick here in September, to talk about developing a positive path forward for our levy. You know, we didn't pass our levy twice last year. That's something we've got to put a plan together to address. This year, we are using those federal ESER dollars, one-time money, and the fund balance money to be able to balance the budget, along with making about $5 million worth of cuts, as you know. And you know from that process, it is not a fun process to have to make budget cuts, because it's people and jobs and programs for kids. And so this year, you know, we're already operating with unfilled positions here in the district and a number of unfilled positions and facilities and maintenance. And so it's difficult to keep the same high-quality level of service without the same number of people, but we're doing our best to do it. And we've got to get together, as you know, in September. We've got that study session set aside to really talk about our path forward with the levy. So lots of information there to digest. Our next step is to take our strategic objectives and formulate our superintendent and cabinet goals. And then those are submitted to the board for approval. Those will go on consent agenda probably in September. So we'll get them to you far in advance, but you'll see they're all directly connected to accomplishing this work that's outlined in our strategic plan. We'll be updating the strategic plan, so it's available on our website and out for people. And then you'll see those updated performance targets, and you can see the progress, which I'm happy to say, we're making great progress on lots of our targets, and you'll see more about that in September.
Questions from the board?
I just have one quick question. You mentioned the committee that we're going to talk more about tonight. I noticed in here, there's a mention of a community engagement board. Is that a yearly committee thing, or is that something we're coming up with? Or what, can you just kind of?
You bet.
Explain that to me a little bit.
You bet. So the community engagement board was new last year, so something that'll be continuing this year, and it's really connected to school attendance and to helping students reengage with school if there's chronic absentee going on. So we did a call-out. This is something that all districts now have. It's part of new state laws and those kinds of things. So we did a call-out invitation last year to community members to help participate on this community engagement board. We may have some more opportunity this year to put that message out and invite more people to attend. But essentially, it's in, instead of going to court and like truancy court, there's now a process where students and families come in and meet with members of the community who help figure out resources and strategies to help reengage the student and get the student to school, so they're engaged in learning.
Thank you.
You bet.
Any other questions? Perfect. Chris, thank you very much. Okay. So we've got strategic objectives. Next on our agenda is unfinished business. We've got Policy 2340 Instruction, Race in the Curriculum, first reading.
Okay, so still me for a little bit. Again, this is, I'm asking you to remember back to our June retreat and then a subsequent board meeting. At the June retreat, the board discussed critical race theory, and there were some notes that I'll just bring up real quick from that meeting, where the board really went through a process of discussing in great detail and at length about this whole concept of CRT, what it means, what it doesn't mean, and what we want to ensure students are taught in our schools and not taught. So these were notes that I took from that board discussion. You guys first looked at these and a draft policy based on these notes back in the spring. Don't remember exactly which board meeting, but this was the draft of the policy that you looked at once before. This policy, I took the board's notes, drafted it into policy language, and this particular policy is pretty parallel to our policy, existing policy on religion in the curriculum, but it's talking about race in the curriculum. So board looked at this and had some discussion, and there were some suggested edits by individual board members. So this next document that you see was some of those notes that I took, where individual board members were saying, well, I would like to see that part struck and this part added, and I don't think we need that part, and we need to add this word, and that kind of discussion. Then at one point, the board had some questions potentially for legal counsel, and so we got Bronson Brown here tonight, and the board tabled this discussion until this meeting. So that just brings us up to speed on where we've been, and so now we're bringing it back to the board to ensure that we can answer any questions that you have. The board can have further discussion about potential edits and potentially act on the policy.
So as Dr. Pierce said, we did table this at our, what was it, our June meeting? Yeah, June meeting?
I think it was a June meeting, yeah.
So we got it, and then, as you stated, we had, we were looking to make a couple of changes. How does, you know, who has questions regarding this? Everyone happy with the way this is written? Anything that you'd like to see changed, edits?
Yeah, I mean, I know that we're not going to agree on it, but I would like to see no CRT to be taught, but I know that we're not going to agree on that, so, but other than that, no, I'm good with it.
Diane, thoughts?
Can I pass? I'm looking, because I know I had a question before, and it was related to Bronson going through it and checking for legalities. But I'm trying to find it specifically, Bronson. But if you know what it is, please come and remind me.
And just while Bronson's coming up, the other thing that I recall is there was some question from the board, and I don't know if this was your question specifically, but about a resolution versus a policy.
That was one of them.
Okay.
So it's, and I can address that. The reason why this is proposed in a policy is because if the board wants to enforce it, for example, if there are staff members that aren't following this policy, then the district can enforce it. That's how they enforce the policies. A resolution is more of a statement of where the board stands on certain decisions. And the policy is essentially direction to the staff and district as a whole. This is, this is policy. This is how the district's going to be run. And then we use those policies when we, if there's concerns with employees or what have you, or give them direction on their work, we go to the policy. What does the policy say?
Perfect. I think that was the one thing, my recollection is that we did want to make this a policy. We did not want a resolution. We wanted to.
Yes, correct.
Enact this in the district.
Yeah, I think that's correct. And I did review this. I didn't have any concerns with the legality of it, but Diane specifically, if there's something in there that.
No, because I wanted you to look at that, because I wanted to make sure that it was clean.
Yep, and I looked at it, and I didn't, I didn't, I didn't see anything that would fly in the face of any of the existing laws, so.
Can I just make one clarifying comment or question? So the highlighted second line, at the bottom of the second paragraph, all of that was in the original draft, with the exception of the red lettering, right?
That's correct.
So the highlighting doesn't mean anything?
Correct. I just highlighted the parts that were tweaked at all. So yes, this whole sentence was in the first version. The ad that was suggested was the, or inferior, language.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I did find my notes, and Dr. Pierce, you can remind me, and maybe Bronson can back this up. We, I had asked about academic freedom of controversial topics, and we already have policies for that. So this would in no way undermine those policies.
That, that's correct. And essentially, with the academic freedom policy, and I could bring it up if we want, but it, it allows for academic freedom within the scope of the district-adopted curriculum. So if it's not part of our curriculum, then, I mean, academic freedom doesn't, you know, it's not free license, but it's within the scope. And so this policy and that policy don't conflict.
That's what I needed to know. Thank you.
Well, if there's no other questions or comments, I will entertain a motion.
Go ahead.
I motion that we approve Policy 2340 Race in the Curriculum as written in this draft.
For first?
For first and second reading.
Perfect.
And I second that.
Wonderful. Any other questions or comments? If not, I will call for the roll call vote, please.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Ms. Fenbit?
Yes.
Mr. Mayberry?
Yes.
And Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Perfect.
May I ask a question before we go? So, well, I hate to bring this up, because it seems like closure here, but I got to ask this question. This is race in the curriculum.
Correct.
How do we cover race in the day-to-day operation of the school? The incident that we had last year, where we had a student declare national end day, and that student, sorry, it seemed like they walked away pretty light-handedly, and then there was another student that said, I'm gonna do it next year.
I wasn't aware of that one.
I'll show it to you.
Okay, okay.
But the young man said he's gonna, what are we doing to face that issue? Because this is great. We took care of it for the curriculum, but we have kids that go to school each and every day that are faced with the fact that they are not the majority at that school, and that there are national end days where they're targeted.
We talked about that in September, maybe? Does that be like a?
No, right now.
I think it's, go ahead, sorry. I was just gonna say, that, in my opinion, will be covered under our bullying, our harassment, our discrimination policies that we have written. I would, I would think that's where I would.
That's a good point. And they beefed up, because obviously, it's not strong enough, because a kid, two, three, four, five kids decided that. And I did not see, I have not seen where they have been, I don't want to say harshly punished, but it would, I'm sorry, Gabe, from my point of view, they're getting off light.
I don't disagree with you, Ron. So if that's something that we need to discuss and beef up, then let's, let's look at it and do it and figure out how we can do that.
And prevent it from happening. When it's already declared that they're going to do it again this year.
Diane?
Could we check to see if there's been any new information about whether that was addressed, or have you checked on that and it was not addressed?
I have not followed up on it. It was just what happened as it lasted, last time. You may have, and I don't want to discredit, you are the staff. You probably know more than I do, and I have very, very good faith with the staff and yourself. It's just, it's my duty as a school board member to.
Absolutely. And so just a couple of things from my perspective. Yeah, absolutely. In, in no way do we condone racism, discrimination, any of that. And we do have policy language that's very specific about it. What is unfortunate in our world is, is we do have incidents that happen, and sometimes, and I don't, I wish we could prevent them. I wish we could prevent individual kids from coming to school and doing things that are abhorrent. We can address them, though, when they do happen, and we can do our best to proactively create cultures in our schools and in our systems where everybody belongs. And that's what our CCDEI, that's the Work of Cultural Competency, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. It's not CRT. It's about creating cultures where every student belongs and where every student knows it's not okay to discriminate, to make fun of, to make anybody else feel like they're less than or other. And that's what we're all about. And, and we are working, our social, emotional learning standards that the board approved, that's a step in our direction of helping kids to understand the harm that it causes and the ignorance when those kinds of things happen. And so we need to teach kids, not only academics and so forth, but teach them how they need to treat one another. And that's what cell standards are all about, and how they need to treat themselves and be aware of the fact that our world and our schools are diverse places, and everybody deserves to be there and to be treated with dignity and respect. And so we're, we're continuing that work, and we need to have good policies, which I believe we do, and good follow-through on those incidents. I will follow up. I do have specific information, I'm not going to share it publicly, about, you know, student discipline, which we're not able to do, but just follow up on that particular incident to make sure that the board knows what the, what all occurred as, as follow-up and follow-through and consequences. And, and we work on that every year. It's ongoing, and 100%, I just want to say that.
I just want to make a comment to Ron. So what I was saying before, just a minute ago, it was, I agree with you, and I want to give that, I think we need to give that, like, proper time. Yeah, so proper time, so like, I think that'd be a good time to like, to really discuss it, or either on like the, you know, the retreat or something like that, but like, this isn't quite doing it justice, right? I think we need to do like a full time where we can really dive into it, because I agree.
That's a good, thank you.
Great, thanks, guys. All right, so, on to new business. We have Policy 7430, Financial Management Lease Capitalization, capitalization threshold.
Comes the big man. Deep pockets. He's going to sell fun.
So yeah, a little update here on lease capitalization. So as it stands now, when, when we have, we have like IT server lease, we do have one right now, and it's about 2.5 million. We entered into it a couple of years ago. The new policy here, that GASB, Government Accounting Standard Board, would require us to book that whole 2.5 million as an expense in the year we sign up for that lease. And that's not, our practice is to, if it's a five-year lease, we do $500,000 a year, and that, that's really more applicable to our books. And so recently, at a business manager conference, they recommended to create a threshold, so a 1.5% threshold would mean you'd have to have a lease of 4.5 million, a $300 million budget. And that threshold is high enough to where we would probably always be under that, and I could work with IT to, to make sure we fall under that and continue with what really is a more realistic booking of those costs. And that's what this policy does here. It creates a threshold of 1.5%, and that should be adequate to, to continue with the way we've been booking those, those costs.
And sorry, Vic, I'm sorry. 1.5% of what? Sorry.
The, the previous general fund, so 300 million generally is about 1.5 million.
So if I may ask, what, what's the idea behind having us book? I mean, that.
They want to create it more like a financing, so you put it as a liability and you kind of amortize it down. It, it really is not that relevant for governments. They, they do it for, you know, private organizations, companies, but it, it doesn't really fit that well. There's a, a lot of rules like that that don't fit that well for cities and districts and governments and.
And again, because the only reason, the only reason you want to do that if you're trying to, you know, avoid the tax, you're trying to pay taxes, you're going to do your bonus depreciation, whatever, it just doesn't make any sense for a state in it. But anyway, I'm not an accountant, so that's why I had to ask.
So we think the way we try to book those every year is a lot more realistic for the financial statements.
And you said that comes out to 4.5 million?
Yeah, 1.5% on a $300 million budget.
It would have to reach that level.
Yeah, you'd have to reach that, and that. Yeah, you'd have to reach that, and that, you know, if, if Ron or someone came to me with a lease that was over that, we'd try to work it down so it would be under that.
Thanks.
Any other thoughts or questions or comments? If not, I will entertain them. Do you need a vote on this?
Yes. Yes, we do.
Yeah, we need to, yeah, okay, this is a policy. All right.
I move to approve policy number 7430, financial management for first and second reading.
Second. Questions or comments? If not, I will call for the roll call vote, please.
Okay, Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Ms. Sunbit?
Yes.
Mr. Mayberry?
Yes.
And Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Second, we have policy number 3545, students' inter-scholastic academic eligibility, first reading. Mr. Scott will be presenting.
Okay, good evening. Policy 3545 needs to have some revisions, so we're gonna be recommending some revision to that policy primarily around WIAA eligibility requirements. Districts are able to set their own eligibility requirements, but we do use a WIAA as a guidance, and we know that the other high schools in the region also use those, so we try to align. So most of the, the substantive change within this policy is really around academic probation, but there, we have some revisions. It's always nice to clean up some language in the, in there as well, so you'll notice that there is some, some cleanup. Primarily, we looked at the title. The title originally was extracurricular activities enrollment, academic eligibility. We really feel the policy is about the ability of students to participate in, in competition, inter-scholastic competition, so we just wanted to rename that. We also noticed that in terms of the, the number of classes a student needs to be passing, our eight-period days at Highlands and at Park were, were not mentioned here, so we just added that piece in. But the meat of the policy is really around academic probation and academic suspension. One way to think about this is that we have two, basically two grading periods, one that, that ends at the, in January, first semester, and one that ends at the end of the year. And the rules change is really to address the ability of students to participate in athletics at the beginning of the school year based on their grades the previous academic year, so the previous semester. We've had policy language for our incoming ninth graders to allow them to participate in a probationary status. This policy language revision would open that up to all students, grades nine through 12, to be able to have a probationary period as they enter into their fall sports season, to allow them to participate in both practices and games. They can always participate in practices while they're on academic suspension or probation, but this allows them to participate in games and gives them a four-week period of time to bring those grades up, to, to show that they're in good academic standing. So that is basically the change to the policy that we are, are proposing. Again, there is some other cleanup language involved around, kind of the, or I guess just cleanup around kind of formatting within that, and I'm happy to answer any other questions, but that's really the meat of it. The students would be academically suspended within the school year because they've been given an opportunity by the end of their first semester, they then have an opportunity to bring those grades up, but they would be suspended from competition during that time. There's no change to that. That's been standing policy. So that's the changes to 3545.
Yes, sir.
I have a question. So I'm a senior, and I wanna play spring sports, but I'm on probation. I can play spring sports?
You can, if you have, if, if you have not met eligibility for that grading period that ends first semester, then you have a period of five weeks during which time you are suspended from competition. You're able to participate, but you have the chance to bring your grades up then. So you, once you have your grades up and your eligibility is there, then you would be able to participate. Does that answer the question?
Sort of. It's my thick brain that's not getting it all here, but if, what's the difference between participating and, what, what's the other term? Being part of, or?
Yeah, so there's suspension or probation.
Yeah, it sounds like to me you, you're, you're on probation, but you can still participate. True or false?
When you're on, when you're on probation, you can still participate in games. So for example, we're, we'll start football games here in about a week or so. Students who were not eligible at the end of this spring semester are able to participate for a period of four weeks into the new school year, and that four weeks is designed to give them a chance to bring their grades up and show that they're in good academic standing. And if they're in good academic standing, then they, then they're off probation and they're regularly eligible.
Almost like it resets every year.
Yeah, and if, if at the end of that four period of time they're not eligible, then they're in a period of suspension where they cannot participate in competition for a period of, of three weeks, and then we'll do another grade check to see where they're at.
Like, it doesn't roll over from the previous year, right?
Right, right. It gives them, it gives them an opportunity. They, they start on probation, so they don't just get a clean slate. They have a period of time, and so at that fourth Saturday, we'll be doing grade checks, and if the students are passing in high school five of six classes with a 2.0 GPA, then they're eligible to participate.
What's a, what's a, I'm sorry, Gabe.
Oh, no, go, go ahead.
What's a football period? How many weeks of the season?
Well, we started, we started practice last week, and it'll, it'll go, and the end of it is typically in the end of October, November.
Ten weeks.
Ten weeks.
And where I'm going with this is I'm a senior, you know, what's the incentive for me to get off of probation if I'm gonna be allowed to play that five weeks? You said five weeks, right?
About, well, about four weeks. It's probably gonna be three to four games that they might be eligible to participate in. But, so the incentive is if you wanna finish out the season and make playoffs, so you're gonna be doing that.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
All right, Ron? I got a few questions. I actually read this a few times the last couple of days. So my, my first question, I, I have a question that's related to Ron's. So I'm a, I'm a student athlete. I get a 1.8 GPA when I'm doing track my junior year. Then I, track is spring sport.
Spring sport.
So, so now I'm ineligible for track in spring. So now I can go into the fall, and I can go and play football for three weeks at least with no restrictions until another grade check happens to say whether or not I'm eligible or not to play. Does that, I, I think I see where the spirit of the, the policy is going, but why, I guess my question is, are we rewarding a student for poor grades potentially in the spring and allowing them to just start fresh again? Like, have we thought about maybe just having them allowed to play but not participate in games until their, like, their grades are checked? Because, I don't know, it just seems like, I don't know, where, where are we, like, there's a reward to play, right? And you have to meet these criterias, and if you don't, like, where's a little bit of accountability on the grades, I guess?
So let's go back to that example of that spring sport. So typically, the, the grades, the, the grades that determine eligibility are at the end of the first semester. So I'm a student who's, who's got a 1.8 GPA, or I failed, you know, I failed one class. I have that five-week period of time from the end of the semester to get, to become eligible. Once I become eligible, then I'm eligible again until that next grading period, which ends the school year. So if I were not eligible after that five-week period of time, I still have the 1.8, I wouldn't be able to participate in track competition.
Right.
For the remainder of, for the remainder of the season.
Right.
So, so, but my understanding, as we've discussed this with our athletic directors, is that coaches have a, a pretty fair amount of influence over students when they're in school to get their grades up, to keep themselves academically eligible. The football coach doesn't necessarily have that ability in the spring to do that for players that he gets in the fall. So it's really designed to kind of help those kids and, again, give them an opportunity to bring that up rather than waiting a five-week period of time. And again, it, when we look at just that eligibility requirement through the WIAA, the feeling was we didn't wanna be at a disadvantage necessarily to other districts around us in terms of holding our students to a higher standard than maybe what the other students are being held to, but more importantly, it was to give them an opportunity, to give them an, an incentive to get their grades up, to be able to participate and not lose almost half of their season.
I see that point of view. I also, I also see, I kinda see both points of view, in the sense you're kind of like lowering the bar in a way, but I do see, that makes sense to balance the, all the other.
Yeah.
As with everything else, there are ways to work it, to work it in your advantage, just like being a rich nerd freshman in college and you end up playing five years. So I, I see where you're going, and I see where you're going. I have to say, I just think about me myself. When I was in, in school, if my grades were down, I would try to say, okay, I'll play three, four weeks hard, get the, maybe get some looks from the college coaches or what have you, and then I rest my knees. I don't have to. But I know, I know that athletes can do it. If you're competitive and you're good and you love football, you're gonna wanna play, play in the playoffs. I, I understand. I see where you're going.
The other, the other thing to point out is that we do, we also in Kinnick have a 2.0 GPA requirement, and that is not part of the WIAA requirements.
Sure.
And it's not also some, some district. So we have a heightened level of, of academic achievement that's required to play, and so that, there is that piece as well. So it, you know, it certainly provides an opportunity for students to participate when maybe they haven't had that opportunity in the past, but it's designed around that, to give them the opportunity to be able to bring those grades up and, and play.
I wanted to bring up one other thing. Gabe, were you done?
I have one, one more question we could add.
Yeah, go.
So, okay, so my, my last question is the rule around class periods. So you have to have five, five class periods in high school essentially to be eligible for sports, right? So what does that do for the student who brought three credits up from middle school and doesn't have to take five credits their senior year? Like, they only, maybe they only need three to graduate, so now they've gotta just, we just gotta dump another credit onto their, or a class onto their schedule to fill in the five class requirement when that student possibly maybe leaves school and goes and works a part-time job and gets a few hours in at work and then goes to practice versus throwing them in, you know, ceramics or art or just something to fill that spot? So I, you know, my question is, is that a hard, fast rule, or have we thought about the, the implications to some of those kids who, who do that? Because I think our running start kids are only there three, three class periods. I know they're doing CBC or whatever, right? So they're in school.
And then they usually come back.
But.
Right. So I, I believe, and I, that those students, I mean, even though they're only three periods enrolled, I think the running start periods are also, I mean, it counts as being, as being enrolled. And to be honest, I would have to probably talk with our athletic directors a little bit more about, like, the frequency with which that impacts our senior athletes, because I'm just not aware of necessarily that impact. As we reviewed the policy, that didn't strike any, I mean, nobody said, hey, this is another thing we should think about because it's creating that, that, that piece of it, the, that the students can, who are on track for graduation, don't have to be enrolled in a, a total of six classes. So I would just have to probably do a little bit more looking into that and get you an answer.
Yeah, and I, I ask, and I ask because I know it's happening, because we just had to throw a fifth hour onto my daughter's schedule so she could be eligible, because she's only had four classes originally scheduled by the counselor. So it, it, it might be infrequent, but, you know, I just don't wanna add a.
Right.
Class, just to add a class if, if we don't have to, so.
Okay.
So with the name change, we didn't get away from the fact that this is not just football, basketball. We have band, we have the gaming clubs, and I think we also have DECA that's also governed by these rules. Is that right or wrong?
The competitions are governed by those rules. Yes. I, I believe, I mean, so have, you know, band competitions, those kind of things are governed by those same rules.
Okay, so having said that, sorry about, not comprehending this right away, but having said that, so if I'm in the band, but I'm not in competition, I'm just, you know, learning the, the drums, this wouldn't apply to me as far as the GPA goes and me staying in the band?
No, it wouldn't, it wouldn't apply.
So you would have to, so you would have to report it in marching band?
Yes.
To be under the WIAA.
Mm-hmm, under the WIAA.
Thank you so much.
And Diane pointed, pointed out, so it looks like there's a, there's a paragraph in there in between some of these highlights that it, it says it allows seniors to enroll in one less class than the minimum number, so that it looks like that would be. Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, Diane.
So related to what we were talking about, students who work or whatever, with our new, I don't know what we're calling it, work-study, where the kids are getting grades for working, I wonder, connected to what Gabe has asked, how that might connect with some of our students who are needing to or wanting to get credit for working? Is that going to be considered a class?
So at this, yeah, so at this point, we don't have, those, those rules haven't been created around providing credit. It's kind of on the horizon. So at some point, when we have the rules that are generated for us to be doing that, we'll reevaluate how that might fit in, but at this point, we don't have, we're, students aren't able to do that, so we don't have it.
So my suggestion is, if a student gets a credit, that should be counted as a class, right? Because you can't get credit for something you don't learn. I'm just.
Right. I think, I think it's a, yeah, it's a consideration once we get the rules to see how that fits in.
Inequitable that if I'm sitting in a class, I get credit and I'm okay, but if I'm out, I don't know, working, working HVAC, I'm learning some electrical, I'm learning all kinds of things, that I should also be credited for that. So just if you will keep that in mind, please.
Yep.
Comment your questions?
I got one.
Ron's gonna run, can't handle this.
I'm sorry. This is very nitpicky, and I apologize. But we have a paragraph where it says, "School may allow seniors on track to graduate with one less class."
Right.
And then we said, next to the last sentence, initially enrolled. Can a kid pick up a class, let's say, two weeks within the semester, say, you know, I don't want this art class. I'd rather do journalism. Can they, can they do that?
Because they're still taking a class.
Yeah, if they were, if they were going to be swapping a class, they could.
So then, that, this is my concern. Then that's not the original enrolled class. You just seem like there's a gap there. Initially enrolled was the art class. Now, if they come back in journalism and they make a poor grade, this gives them an out because this wasn't their originally enrolled class. Initially enrolled class was art. They now are in journalism, which they can have a poor grade.
So generally, generally, those add drops are not gonna happen beyond about the second to third week of school.
Okay.
And if a student said, oh, man, I'm failing this class, so I'm gonna drop this class to get into another class. My sense is that that would not be something that we would allow the student to gain.
That's actually.
And if it, so if they're, so again, if they were failing a class within that first two-week period of time, I, I believe that we would be, we would be considering where were they at initially, and if they're just dropping a class to get into an easier class because they, the, the sentence there that says they can't do that to gain eligibility would govern that.
But semantically, that sentence says, like what Ron said, the class in which they were initially enrolled. And that's the, that's the thing there, that if I.
Sure.
Sign up for X, whether I'm failing it or not, if I change to something that I'm not initially enrolled in, does that then affect me? Because that's how that reads.
Can we say presently enrolled? Would that throw the whole thing off? They wish they are presently enrolled.
In which they are present.
No, I changed it. Yeah, because that, that accomplishes Ron's.
So what I'm, what I'm wondering in regards to this clause is I'm wondering if it's, again, we're talking about seniors, and we're talking about seniors who are enrolled in a minimum number of classes. So I don't know how that may, how that may change that. I mean, you know, so, but I can certainly, I get, I don't think there's gonna be a problem in changing that, but I would want, I would want to do a little research just to make sure.
Because initially would be the first class in which they enrolled.
Right.
So that kind of is.
Presently is any class.
Right.
Yeah, it makes sense.
And I don't want that to cause problems, because sometimes students sign up for class A, but they actually get put into class. And I don't want that to cause problems because sometimes students, um, sign up for class A, but they actually get put into class B. And then when they get to school, they say, oh, I wanted A and they go to the counselor and the counselor switches them. That can cause a problem.
Okay. So how do we move forward with this? Do we want to view?
Can we?
Because asking this to be reworked.
Can we have that checked out?
Well, must sound like Matt. I think Matt got it. He's got it.
So.
So can we, I'm sorry, can we approve it for first reading and second reading? You come back with it changed?
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Then I will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion. I, I'd like to make a motion, uh, that the board approves policy three, five, four, five. Interscience academic eligibility for first reading.
Second.
First and a second. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Ms. Sunvic?
Yes.
Mr. Mayberry?
Yes.
And Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Scott will continue with policy number three, one, two, two, excused, unexcused absences.
Okay. Well, the past one was just a three-page policy. That we worked through. This is an 11-page policy. So we'll see if I can't improve my luck with this one. Um, so basically, um, our policy on excused and unexcused absences, policy thirty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two. Sorry. I guess I need you to bring it up so people can see it. So thirty-one, twenty-two needs to be revised based on recent legislation that added general symptoms of mental health wellness, um, to, as a valid excuse. Um, for absence. Previous, um, we've had, um. Inpatient or outpatient care for mental health wellness has been included in the policy. The recent legislation also included. Um, general symptoms as being, um, a valid reason for, for an excused absence. Again, while revisiting and revising the policy, we took opportunity to recommend removal of language that is COVID-specific. Or addresses instructional modes such as remote learning that we do not regularly offer. So we had made those changes in the fall of two thousand or twenty twenty. And so we wanted, we figured as long as we're in here revising, we might as well revise those parts out. Um, so, um, again. Uh, as we look through the policy, it is a lengthy policy and I'm happy to, at the pleasure of the board, kind of talk about whatever places you'd like to. Um, but on page two specifically is where we made the change in regards to adding in the, the, um, symptoms of mental health. To be included in excuses, excused absences. Um, and we, there, you'll see throughout most of the rest of the policy. We've removed the additions that we did in twenty twenty around COVID nineteen, replacing it on page three. With just a general statement that in the event of a natural disaster, an emergency school closure that was due to. A natural disaster, communicable disease outbreak and our other events, then there were some rules that, that were developed. To, to guide absences in those cases. And so we just replaced the COVID-specific language with this language. It's a bit more general. Uh, but it all, it has the same rules around absences and what we can, what absences that are excused and not excused. Um, we also, um, on page six, um, and, and then. And pages beyond that talked more about our tiered systems of support. Um, Dr. Pierce alluded to that, I think through the community engagement board. Those are just examples of things that we do to try to get to the root cause of absence. And so, and then we took out on page seven. The po- potential loss of credit because we felt that was really more appropriate to be in procedural language. Um, and it probably didn't, and plus there were some things in there that were, you know, potentially out of date in terms of referring to committees that maybe don't exist. And so we wanted to move that into procedure. Um, and then, um, page nine is really more about just differentiated supports that we offer for students and families. Who are experiencing absences. And finally, on page 10, we just updated the, um, legal references to, um, reflect those more accurately.
The only question I have is like, um, this is like prove is not the right word. I understand that. But like, how does like someone? Lack of better word, prove that, that, you know, the mental health thing. Do they just, you know, I mean. It's, I mean, if you're sick, you're throwing up, you're throwing, all right. But you just said I'm just struggling today mentally and.
Yeah, it'd be the same way as with sickness. We don't require a doctor's note or a doctor's diagnosis. It's, it's up to the parent. The parent says student was sick the other, yesterday and please excuse the absence and it would be the same way.
Matt, on page one, right under definition of absence. So you have the two definitions. On a one B, not participating. And then, um. On two, not participating in any instruction-related activity. So if a student is physically present in a class, but is not participating or, or refuses to participate, whatever. That student, while physically present, may be marked absent because that's very different than current practice.
No, I think the intent is that they're, they're not in class to, to receive the instruction. Um, not that they are sitting in class, not participating. It's that they're not physically in class.
Cause it says under B, not participating in the following activities. At an approved location, instruction or instruction-related activity. So it. A is not present, B is not participating.
But I, I think, I, I see where you're going with it. My, my interpretation is you have to, you have to. A student's absent when A is met. They're not physically present on the ground. So if they're physically present on the ground.
Not.
And not participating, they're, they're still there because they're present on the ground is the way, is the way I interpret that.
And I would hope it was interpreted that way, but it's a little iffy.
Yeah. I, I think as well, and I think what it's trying to say too, is if I'm. Absent from class be, and I'm supposed to be in a field trip or something, but I'm not on that field trip. I'm not, I'm not there. I mean, that's how I was reading it. If you're, if I'm supposed to be somewhere. And I'm not there, then I'm absent, whether that's class, my physical classroom where I'm supposed to be or. In another activity that, you know what I mean, that.
Or if I'm, if I'm physically present in A, but I don't go to fifth period, instead I hang out in the bathroom.
Correct.
Then I'm considered absent. I am on the physical grounds. I am at school that day, but I'm not in my classroom. I'm not participating. In those, that's, it's guiding that. Um, and again, that, that part of the language is, I mean, again, not a change from current practice. And I don't think we have any, any lack of clarity on what constitutes that absence. But I understand what you're saying. It's. Can be interpreted differently, but it, I don't believe that it, it has been.
Just, just one comment I think kind of ties into this. Um. We notify parents via phone, via email when student's absent. Have we, is there any way that we can utilize some sort of platform or maybe this new platform where as a parent, you can. Quickly mark your student absent that would report versus, cause I gotta be honest with you. I, I just dread calling in in the morning. And leaving a voicemail or having to call after hours and leave a voicemail because I forget or whatever. But is there some sort of? Quick way to do that as a parent, like through power school or this new platform where if your student's absent, you can just. As the parent login, absent, excused, sick and, and be done with it.
Can you say yes? That would be cool.
I, I just, I don't know.
Why don't I follow up with the team on, uh, parent square functionality and that kind of thing? And we'll, we'll follow up on that.
Yeah. Yeah. I know you can email. I just.
Okay. Yeah. Get it.
That would be a cool feature.
Yeah. We'll find out.
Yeah. No, I think it's, it's always good to try to find more efficient ways to allow families to do what they need to do. So that's a good idea to explore.
Okay. There's no other comments, questions? I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve policy thirty-one, twenty-two, students excused and unexcused absences for first and second reading.
I'll second.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, I will call for the local vote, please.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Ms. Sunvic?
Yes.
Mr. Mayberry?
Yes.
And Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, next on the agenda is policy E twenty-three, ten, instruction. Section and adoption of instructional materials first reading. Dr. Pierce will be presenting.
All right. So one more policy tonight, and I have just a couple of slides to provide a little bit of context and explanation before we get to the actual. Policy language. So as I mentioned earlier, this year we will be forming an instructional materials committee. Uh, so I want to just highlight right now what our current policies and processes around adoption of instructional materials. Touch on the rationale for the change and then show you the proposed policy and updated language. So we have two current policies that apply to instructional resources or instructional materials. Uh, those are the things that we adopt, the books and other types of materials to help support teaching of the curriculum. The curriculum is really the scope and sequence, the standards, the program of study that's being taught. So we've got two current policies, twenty-three, ten and twenty-three, eleven. And in a nutshell. The processes that are, um, specified in those policies are, are what you see on the screen. When it comes to adopting instructional materials, those books and resources and other things that we use to teach the curriculum. There's review and selection by what we call curriculum advisory committees that are made up of staff members. There's a public review period where those, uh, instructional resources and materials are available for the public to preview and look at and provide comment on. And then, uh, they go to the board for approval and you see those typically they come through consent. What, and, and that's for, uh, major, so think about major textbook adoptions and those, those kinds of things. That's the current process. When it comes to, um, supplemental materials, so say in addition to the anthology that I'm. Using, um, as an English teacher, there's, uh, novels I want to use. There's policy language about if I'm going to use, you know. This novel and teach it to my kids and they're going to learn it as a class, then there's policy language that says, so the teacher makes that request. The principal reviews it and, um, signs off on it. It then goes to the curriculum advisory committee for review. Then it gets reviewed, uh, by assistant superintendents and then it comes to the board for approval. So that's the current process on supplemental materials like novels, things like that. So we want to improve and expand our vetting process for instructional materials. We want to expand the number of people, including parents and staff members and, and, um. People in our system who are looking at those materials. Uh, we want to ensure that there's a very thorough and formal process for submitting materials to the board. And again, we want to include parents in this process. There's some parent involvement in our, our current processes, but we don't have a formal standing. Instructional materials committee, and that's pretty common practice for, for many districts. So we are, we're going to form this standing committee that includes staff members, parents, high school students and community members. And their role will be to review instructional materials, give a final review after it's gone through some preliminary review. Before they come to the board for approval. So you'll have the recommendation of the instructional materials committee. Not just potentially like a recommendation of one of our assistant superintendents or something like that. Okay? So, uh, IMC membership includes, uh, will have, um, be facilitated by, by the assistant superintendent of teaching and learning. That's Alyssa St. Hilaire, new to her role this year. So she, she'll be facilitating this process. It's a very formal process. And standing committee, they use Robert's rules of order. Um, there, it's a big committee. There'll be, uh, one, uh, district administrator in addition to, uh, Alyssa, a building administrator from each level, elementary, middle and high school. A number of teachers from various levels, elementary, middle and high school and various content areas. Um, including librarians and other, uh, certificated staff, a number of parent slash community members and high school students. Because they give a great perspective, uh, and, uh, on, uh, materials, elementary, middle and high school. So the, what you're going to see reflected in the policy language is this proposed process. So when it comes to adoption of major materials. There'll still be curriculum advisory committees that, uh, work to review and select. We had, uh, for example, world language go through that similar process this past year, right? There'll still be a public preview and review period, uh, with the, with people, anyone able to come in and review the materials and provide feedback. Then those materials and any public comment will go to the instructional materials committee. So that's where the new part of the process comes in. The materials will go through the review of the IMC and then they will come to, um, recommendation. If, if the IMC determines they should be recommended for board approval, they'll come to the board. If the IMC doesn't, they won't come to the board. When it comes to those supplemental materials, this just again, teacher requests similar about using the novel. Sign off by the principal, review by the CAC, the public preview period, then the IMC, then the board. So what this all. Adds up to when it comes to the actual policies is that we're combining policy twenty-three, ten, instructional resources. And twenty-three, eleven, selection and adoption of instructional resources, because there was just some redundancy there. And we're adding this language that, uh, for the instructional materials committee or the IMC. That will make this process happen, which I just described. So the actual policy language. Uh, that's not it. Just two policies that we're looking at. First is twenty-three, ten. Twenty-three, ten, we're completely striking through and taking the pertinent language from twenty-three, ten and putting it into what is now twenty-three, eleven. And what we're renaming to twenty-three, ten.
Got it.
Okay. So that one's all strike through. And now let me bring up the new twenty-three, ten, which used to be twenty-three, eleven. Okay. So, uh, you see the strike through underlined version in front of you. Um. Current language says those district CACs serve as the IMC. That language is coming out because we're formulating the actual IMC. Still having the important work of the CACs in place. A couple of little language changes. Again, people tend to refer to curriculum and instructional materials. It's synonymous and they're really not. So we're just being clear that this is about instructional materials and resources. The other substantive change you see here is, uh, the new language around the district instructional materials committee or IMC, a new acronym to learn.
As I said, did you make up a new acronym? I can barely remember the other ones.
And then, um. The, it talks about the procedures being established and so forth. And so in the procedure language, it spells out all the membership. Uh, of IMC, which I summarized on the slide. Uh, we'll give you updates along the way. Um, once the board approves the policy, we'll start the process of getting the word out for people to apply to be part. Of the IMC and get the meeting scheduled together and all of that. And we'll keep you updated, uh, as we go. But essentially that's what this policy change and update is all about.
Questions?
Yeah. So my question is, how do people get on like parents, community members? That's always the question, right? How do they get on it?
Yeah. So, um, first step is we advertise and, and, um, communicate about the, the new policy. And the resulting new committee that will be formed and there will be, uh, application process. For, um, getting that out and selecting people. Um, it. We'll do it similar probably to how we did it with the, um, call for people to participate in the comprehensive health. Process. So there was an application. I know that was a lot of interest in that. Um, this is a standing committee that typically meets monthly. Uh, there's a lot of homework with these types of committees where people are given the books to read and come back and talk about, um, with the rest of the committee. So, um, I'm not sure right now if we're going to have more people apply to be part of the committee than there are spots. But, uh, we would have some kind of fair process if that's the case for determining whether it's drawing straws or whatever. For determining who's going to be on the committee. We do want diverse representation in terms of, you know, level and, um. The, all kinds of diversity. So we'll take a look at that. Basically, the process though involves inviting people to apply to be part of the committee.
Justin?
Thank you for including high school students in this and how many will be on?
Thank you for including high school students in this, and how many will be on that committee? You have a certain number of slots.
We have in mind three. Because again, it's a big time commit.
It is.
And it's a standing committee with, you know, work to do. We had an IMC in my former district, we had, I think, two students on it. It's just tough because they can't always come. We thought by having three, we'd have one more, and at least if one or two can't come, we'd have one student there, but we'll certainly see how it goes.
And are there different eligibility criteria for the students than there would be for adults?
I don't believe so.
Because I'd like to make sure that we get an excellent cross-section of our students, not necessarily just the leadership ASV students.
Great.
Because we often miss many other students that don't fall into that category when we're adopting curriculums. So I'd really like to make sure that we get students that give us input into what high interest would be, not just curriculum, but what they might be interested in.
Sounds great. Agree.
Just two quick follow-ups. So I like the committee, so I'm thankful for that we're putting this together. First question is, they'll still come to the board through the same way they have been, right? So with the textbooks and those big curriculums, they're presented, we discuss it, supplementals, they still come under Consent Agenda Items, is that correct?
Typically under Consent, but you'll have, what you will receive is more information because they will have gone through the IMC, and there's an IMC report that would come with the materials, see what the IMC had to say, and it'll be like some forms or something.
So the presentation just not being presented in the meeting essentially, right?
Correct, correct, yeah.
And then my only other question with, just with the curriculum in general, have we thought any more about, or is there any way to provide the public review period in a bigger scope for people who may not have time to make it to the school or down to the admin building, or this, that, and the other? Is there some thought of trying to get this to where the community at large can have an easy place to go and review this, or can we do that? I don't even, I don't know.
Yeah, you know, let me take that back to the team and we'll give it some discussion and thought. I know with some of the bigger adoptions, there's like, there's been school-based meetings and opportunities, so parents can go there, and then we also have them here at the district. With, I'm not sure about, you know, like, online kinds of things, because typically it's like we've got the actual materials, if they're not online and people want to look through them, but let me just take that comment back to the team and see what we can maybe brainstorm.
Are you asking like alternate days or times?
Yeah, almost like, I mean, if we're going to be open, let's be honest, like we did the Levy presentations and we had four people show up, but if we were able, in a similar vein, and I know we broadcast those, but if we can have some sort of way where they can watch the committee or the instruction material that's presented, where they can do it while they're, you know, sitting at their kid's practice, waiting to pick them up, or just something to supply feedback that's going to maybe garner a larger response, because we know probably most of the materials don't have a ton of response, and we probably don't get a lot of people showing up to review them per se, but just trying to collect a large portion of feedback is all. If we can do it, great, if we can't, it is where we're doing it, so.
I'd like to ask about an alternate time, because eight thirty to four is not necessarily a convenient time for when most people work, and we're open here till five maybe, but still, if you're working eight, ten-hour shifts and you're having to go back and forth, you're not going to be able to make it. So an evening shift, or, you know, just one time at least when that would be available to people who can't make it during those banker's hours.
Yeah, that's good, let's, let me take that back too.
And then do we have interpreters during those times when those are available? Because not everything is in.
And are you talking about the preview times, like when people can come in and get the materials and look at them?
Because if I come in to look at an English curriculum, for example, or a book, if I don't speak English, I can look at a book, but I may not be very able to figure out what the book is about. And if we're talking about getting more diverse people to be on our committees, I'd like them to be able to know, you know, what that book their child will be looking at, so.
Yeah, let me give that one some thought too. All good, good feedback, and just need some time to kind of think through and figure out what's possible.
Just my only question is, how many people are, in total, do you think will be on this?
Off the top of my head, it was like fourteen, it's like upwards of twenty-nine, yeah. It's a big committee.
That's a lot of.
It's a great group.
Well, it's, well, it's going to be, you've got your work cut out for you, it's going to be hurting a lot of.
Well, she's really smart.
Great, perfect. Any other comments or questions? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move that the board approve Policy 2310, Instruction, Selection, and Adoption of Instructional Materials for First and Second Reading.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I will call for the roll call vote, please.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Ms. Sunvit?
Yes.
Mr. Mayberry?
Yes.
And Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, next, is our, talking about our next meeting agenda. Currently, we have the Strategic Goals Report, Strategic Goal, sorry, I'm going to read this again, Strategic Goals Report, All Students Are Engaged Learners, Strategic Goals Report, All Families Are Key Partners, and Annual Update on Technology Operations. Anything else you guys would like to add or questions regarding the next agenda?
Sorry, guys, I've got a lot of disturbance today. Is we could, can we clarify our policy on having arms or weapons at school board meetings?
Yeah, that's a good one, Ron, because there's a whole host of new laws that were passed in the last legislative session that are requiring us to go make sure that our policy's in line with that, because, and that's one of them, that, I know we do have the sign out front that says you can't have a firearm on, in here, like, this is just like school premises, and so we'll just make sure, that's a good one to loop back on. We've got it in our queue.
And there's some tricky phrases, and, because if you lease a room, let's say at the, at the, at some wedding venue, but you're performing school business, then it applies, right? So I just think we need to make sure we all know and are on the same page about where we can and can't have weapons.
Yep.
How much of that is state law versus, you know?
Yeah, and we can clarify on that, I mean, there's some new law, and we'll get real specific into what the law language says. Every year, we get a big report from, with help from WASA and WASDA and all those people that say, these are all the bills that passed into law in the last legislative session, and so make sure you're updating your policies and everything to align with the new law, and so that's one of a number of them, so thanks, Ron.
I know we're moving into something different with the General Assembly stuff, but I don't know if we need to clarify now, we might need to put that back on the agenda for next month for follow-ups, so I'm just trying to, I guess, do it more in order. Maybe we don't have to after a conversation, I just.
Okay, why don't we just, why don't we have a conversation, see where we fall, and then if we need to add it back, we'll add it back.
Well, you could just put conversation about General Assembly, and it could be anything. It could be the dates, it could be the places, whatever, if you need to do that.
Okay, I'll add that. Okay, anything else? Okay, if not, we will go on to other business, the Board preparation for the WASDA General Assembly.
Okay, well, I shared some information with the board about this topic, and so this is really a time for the board to have a discussion about how you want to approach that. As a quick reminder, the board wants to talk about a process for prioritizing legislative positions and determining who's going to be the board member appointed to cast the vote on behalf of the board during General Assembly. It's scheduled virtually for September 30th and October 1st. All the information's on the WASDA website, and everybody can participate, but only one person can have the vote, but the vote can be moved between members at the time, so you all are probably more knowledgeable about this topic than I am, but I just wanted to make sure you have the opportunity to talk about what process that you want to use, and, you know, if there's anything that you need from staff or me to help, to help with the process.
So in the past, how have we handled, how has the board handled the voting?
It's been the legislative rep, has been the voter, and then traded off to, like, when you're, when Ron was led rep, he couldn't, and then I did it for the period of time that he was in another meeting. So it could be given to any other.
Gotcha, so, all right, so the led rep, that has been the historical process, okay?
Depending on who else is there, I mean, not everybody may be there at all times, so that would be the thing, you need to know who's going to be there at all times, because sometimes you may be working at your other job, and you say, I'll come in at four or whatever, so we would need to know who's there at what time in case whoever gets the vote is not able to be there.
Are there several votes during the time? I have not attended.
It's only that, pretty much.
Just vote after vote after vote.
Yes.
Is there any comment, like, comment and debate? And anybody, any board member can comment and stuff?
Yes, absolutely, and that's what it's all about, because you're setting up for the November issue.
Yeah, so like, they debate a topic, then vote, and then just the legislative rep, whoever the appointed person is, and they debate, and, okay.
And the person who would vote would vote based on what our board.
I would hope so, yeah.
Had a consensus on.
Yeah. And that's my question, is how do we know what our board has a consensus on?
We should meet before.
Well, yes, because hopefully we will meet before, we should, and we should be talking about it, because we have that list of things, you know, that will be coming.
We should put that on the docket at some point.
So is this something, for those of you who have attended, you kind of show up and they just go through legislative priorities and position priorities, and then everyone is just, it's just kind of a all-day vote, based on how your board's, I mean, that's the gist of it. So it's all of the, I mean, because it's like a hundred and ninety-page handout, so, okay?
And it will be in sections, so each specific section as will be, and then they save some for later, they're going to have more, but generally, you go chronologically.
I guess we can talk about it when we get, talk about our positions, because it is a process and a strategy, and one thing, you want to take care of your bathroom business, because if you're not there, then.
They give you bathroom business. Do you have, I shredded my old one, do you have one of your old copies from that?
I don't know, I probably do.
Because we could show you how quickly it moves and what's in it. I don't, I know I don't have mine, because I shredded it, but.
But it's very organized, Roger's Rules, Robert's Rules of Order, and you get to debate, and you do, you get a call, you get to stand up, and everyone in the room can walk up to the microphone. And they will, and everyone will comment, and we can talk about it later, but we have to be sure on our stances, because it may differ than three schools on the west side that has a huge voting capability, and they're joined together.
There's some weightedness.
They're joined together and outvote you, so our strategy has to be sound.
And then there also has to be some communication via cell, because if somebody changes something, oh, we may not approve or disapprove that, we may need to discuss that very quickly.
Or trust, or ledger.
Or, yeah, or say, what if it changes, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to know how we kick this off and how we do it, so I'm happy to.
And in fact, last year, we were done early on both, both days.
I would tell you, I would not be there.
Almost all day.
It depends, it could be all day, it could be only one day. It could go till eight or nine o'clock at night, so generally.
I won't be here, I won't be.
So on the WASDA site, they suggest that you determine, that the board determine the board's top twenty positions, and so with that process, they said you want to discuss the legislative positions up for a vote, review the standing ledge positions, there's links to all of this, look at last year's legislative priorities, and then survey fellow members and combine results. So I'm not sure how you want that process to happen. At this, there's, you know, a September fourteenth board meeting with business items that are here on the agenda, then the next board meeting remembers a study session focused on Levy. So there's one board meeting between now and September thirtieth, but it sounds like there might be able to be some things that individual board members do that then we combine, or.
May I make a suggestion, and it's pretty much that, I suggest, look over these in the luxury of your living room, or your favorite chair, or whatever, and then the ones that you feel really strong about, maybe we send out an email, say, hey, you know, we say, hey, item.
I wonder if what we could do, so.
Not at the vote. I'm sorry, go on, go on.
Kind of along the same lines, though, of what you're saying, I wonder if each board member individually identified your priorities, and then you sent those to Mike and to me, then I could try to compile that somehow to say, and then send it back out, so there's some of that pre-work, but avoiding the board having any sort of dialogue.
Something like that.
And you can take those twenty priorities and list them, one for twenty.
Like, which one's your higher priority for you, or something?
And if you don't care about one, you can just say, don't care.
You know, I'd like to do that a lot better than the way we did it last year, when we just had to rank two pages of stuff.
Last year was something new that WASDA was trying, they supposedly have something this year, but I have not seen it yet, that is, we would send them the information and it would all be compiled there. That has not come out yet, but I'm hoping to hear it next week.
Perfect, okay, well, to be continued, obviously.
So you need to decide who's going to be.
Well, I mean, if the led rep is, if that's what we've been doing historically, I don't see a reason to change.
I don't have an issue, I mean, I'm happy to help if you have something that you need to do.
I'm happy to do it, no, I'll be there. What I really need to know is who will be there at what time, in case something happens and I can't, and then there's a process that I just would send them a message and say, Dave has it, Mike has it, Mike has it, and then you get to vote, so it's very easily, it's done very simply, but I just would need to know. And like, if you say I'm going to be there at a certain time and then something happens, that they, whoops, sorry, can't be there.
Yeah.
But that's very easily done under the system, so, we're happy to do it.
Sounds great. Any other thoughts or comments?
Okay, so I'll follow up again with the information and the links, and some maybe timeframes of when to send the information, so we even have time to compile it prior to September fourteenth.
And everybody can just go on the WASDA website and read those, if you, there's links to links to links to tell you more about things if you have questions about them, and if you have more questions, connect with one of the WASDA people, and they will give you an hour of their time, that's what they're there for, they're happy to do that.
Perfect, anything else? Well, if nothing else, we're going to adjourn the meeting, I love it. Look at this, seven.
Seventeen?
That's right, we're so efficient. Beautiful, done. Thank you.
Thank you.